Thank you. A little roll call.
Mayor Hasler.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Jones.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Morgan.
Here.
Mayor, we have a forum.
Very good. Motion for approval of the agenda.
No approval.
Second.
Call of favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Takes us down to Martin's report.
Okay, uh, park board met. They met here with a call to the public hearing. Nobody in the public showed up, so we didn't have the public hearing. We went ahead and had the regular meeting.
What was the public hearing on?
I applied for a grant. I was going to apply for a grant to, speaking of grants, to, uh, replace and improve the hiking trail through the park. And, uh, that grant opportunity will come up next year. But in the process, I went to a pre-grant conference and, um, I discovered that you didn't stand much of a chance of getting a grant from them unless you could prove you had significant citizen input. You didn't just make the decision. And so told the park board, I've been telling the park board, you need to get this citizen input. So we scheduled this public hearing, put it on the website. And I'm not too discouraged about that because what they are doing and implementing a survey, so we spent most of the evening talking about the contents of the survey and how we can change it and whatever. And so that survey is being, uh, being produced now and will be administered and we will get that input. But I'd like to come up with another way. I told them, let's, you know, think, picture thinking, how can we engage people? One of the things they're gonna do is, as volunteers, they're gonna go out to the park and talk to the people who are using the park with this survey in hand. They also decided to change their meeting night. One of the park board members has a different work responsibilities and can't make, couldn't make the Monday evening meetings and she asked for a change. So they decided it would be on the fourth Tuesday of each month at 6:00 PM instead of the fourth Monday at 7:00 PM. So I've been working with Joe Hurst on the contract documents. They're getting their insurance and bond information together. We can't issue the notice to proceed until we have that and sign contract in hand, which should come in any day. And, uh, and then once we give them the notice to proceed, the clock starts and they'll start to work. Uh, you'll notice that the second, third sheet of this, my report, uh, is the proposal for, uh, completing, doing an overlay from the end of the new construction to the bridge on Chadwell Lane. It would be $20,400. If you're inclined to do that, uh, let me know now and we will, uh, do it, go ahead and prepare a change order on the contract to add that to it. You know, so we can... No, it's a dollar figure. We have the funds and the cap, I mean, it's, we, the money's there in the transportation fund, so...
Well, we're gonna have to come up with some more money because our bid, we got the sixty-five or seventy thousand from the, from the, uh, special roads, but that bid come in, what was the bid, a hundred thirty?
Thirty-six.
A hundred thirty-six. So then you're gonna add twenty to it. So that offset, we're gonna have to take it out of the capital improvement fund to do this.
No, we have, we have, we have the money to do the work without borrowing against that fund.
Okay. I say it needs to be done.
Well, it needs to be done and if we wait and do it at a different time, it's gonna cost even more because they're, it's not there already.
Complete it and then do it. Then also that street needs a couple of street lights down in there, too.
That's a different...
One of the things I've received several complaints on is, you know, the shoulders of that road in certain places, you know, and of course the width of the road is, you know, now that we're gonna have truck traffic down through there, concerned about the width of that road.
They can all go so wide and, you know...
Would help to do a little brush cleaning.
The concrete's gonna be tighter than the asphalt is now. Adding width to what they're proposing to overlay would, you know, change that figure significantly.
Right.
Because they're not putting down any new bays.
So Martin, what would you need from us to move forward with this?
Just, just, just direct me. You'll have to act on a change order at our next meeting. I just want to know from you, shall I prepare that change order?
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Then, um...
Martin, one other thing I meant before you move forward, though, down there next to that low spot, I mean, just overlaying that low spot. Gary?
Yeah.
Need your assistance.
You spot, the spot where the water crosses the road?
Yeah, where it's always... Down in that low area right there before Dempsey's driveway that's always so top hold up, I mean, just overlaying that's just gonna be a Band-Aid. What do we need to do there?
We can go dig it out before they get there and put some rock in and compact it.
Well, but the, I mean, the problem that, that's where the water goes...
Probably crosses.
Crosses the road there.
Yeah.
You gonna put a French drain in?
Culvert pipe.
I can look at, I don't know about a culvert pipe because that ditch, there's not really a ditch on the other side of the road to drain it, too.
I know a hard rain that crosses there.
Mm-hmm.
It's not far from the creek, so...
Right.
But that's something we can do ourselves.
Yeah.
And something needs to be...
While you're there, let's go ahead and discuss the other road thing. The other, second sheet, uh, is using, using Joe Hurst's current figure on asphalt. We calculated what the cost of doing the roads that Gary had recommended is, and it's a hundred and seventy thousand three hundred dollars. Again, the funds are available, uh, without using that capital improvement reserve. Would you want to proceed with bidding on, on those roads?
What is the Ford Street from state maintenance? How far, what's the cross street, you're gonna stop that?
The Ford Street from state maintenance?
Uh, just a little bit north of Washington.
Okay.
Gonna go through that intersection and take care of a drainage problem on that corner.
I'd like to also add, like to go ahead and finish Cedar all the way out to the thirty-two. We're gonna stop, that's two more blocks. I think it's two or three more, well, three more blocks. You're stopping at Walnut. We're stopping at Walnut, we could pick up Cherry and then Rosier and then you're out to thirty-two.
Mm-hmm.
Then you have a big connector in a subdivision that's on both sides, it's done.
Yeah, Ford Street.
Out to Ford Street, I'm sure, yeah. But we could do, I know that's gonna be some extra money, but I think it's well worth it. Then we have two main connectors, like we did Park on the other end and we got Cedar on this end. I know then in between streets, there's some work that needs to be done, but at a later date, we could do some of that.
Is it center drag?
Center drag.
Are there any issues where they got broken track to push the asphalt? I mean, they're gonna disbreadther that in, I guess, or what is behind it?
Well, yeah, we'll, they'll have to mill out, to meet, to meet the railroads there and then...
See, and that, now this isn't with any milling work, is it?
Right.
Some of this on, on your overlay, that's, they gotta do some milling or...
No, there's no milling included in, in this work, so it's not reflected in this price.
Right.
Um, but the, uh, there is some leveling that's gonna be required.
Yeah.
And that's, that's in that place.
Yeah.
So... There's, there won't be a whole lot of milling on Cedar. It'd mainly be in the intersection because most of the driveways and everything already have a lip, so...
I'm good with it. I think those are, I wish we could do more, but that's, that's a pretty good hit for this, this grid.
Sorry, Paul, don't caddy.
Uh?
Don't caddy.
Not this year.
All right, so I'll prepare, uh, bid documents for that and advertise it and we'll proceed.
All right. Thank you.
All right. The next item, uh, since our, our meeting with lots of citizens involved about the public nuisance ordinance, there's been discussion with various members of this board about what's possible and what's not. So I thought I'd use my report as the opportunity to have a review of and discussion of the nuisance ordinance and ask questions, answer questions if we can and decide what to do.
I have a question, um, and nothing to insult you, Mark, but...
Had me twice today.
Not this time.
Might drop him now.
During the last...
Put your glasses on.
During the last situation or the last ordinance, uh, I had a conversation with our prosecutor and he felt that the legislation we were proposing was unnecessary and that he is fully comfortable addressing these issues based off what we already have. And I'm wondering, I mean, I, I understand the role of the city attorney is to protect us.
The city attorney had nothing to do with that.
Well, no, I mean, as far as drawing stuff up, but I'm just saying, why aren't we consulting with Jeremy and what he feels comfortable and the wording that he needs to prosecute these cases? He feels our current ordinances are, are fine to deal with that situation with how he reads them. And I think he needs to be brought in at a fold to maybe if it needs tweaking or if he feels comfortable with it, why are we trying to reinvent the wheel? I've had this ordinance for a lot of years. We've had a lot of attorneys, we've had a lot of people involved and nobody has read it to take care of that property.
I don't know why everybody's looking to address to me. This is not gonna address to me. This is not my issue. I didn't have anything to do with this ordinance.
Right, exactly.
I wouldn't disagree with anything that they said, although I have not, this isn't this particular property. I was gonna do it today and I just got out of the court.
Nor has he gotten, I presume.
Yes, I don't know if Mr. Brower has it or not, but he's, he's a good prosecutor and, uh, but, you know, I don't know what the details of this particular situation is. My understanding what was trying to be addressed was a unique issue, uh, because normally in our ordinances deal with inoperable vehicles that, uh, that if you have a licensed titled vehicle that's operable, it's not gonna be considered a nuisance under many city codes.
Right.
And so, you know, the question was, okay, if we have somebody that has a whole lot of cars, can we address that? And I think that's what was looked at and the only thing I said with regard to that is it's within the police power of the city to pass the ordinance. Beyond that, it's a discretion call and you all whether it's a good idea and whether it's necessary and all that, so... So I, just so you know, so you know, I don't have a dog in that fight, I'm more than willing to help out and, you know, and we're, from the city attorney perspective, when I'm involved, it's a civil matter and if it's a cost benefit analysis of what you wanna do, how much you wanna spend and how much you think it would reduce the, the civil actions as far as, you know.
If we seek to apply our ordinance, we're going to ask the person to mitigate what we perceive to be the violation of the standards adopted by the ordinance. Failure to do so, how, how do we pursue that civilly? Is that a, results in a citation and a referral of the case to the prosecuting attorney?
Yeah, generally, that's how you wanna do it because that's the most cost efficient way. Otherwise, you can, you know, go through the nuisance enforcement, you do a civil action independently of the prosecution, civil court.
Now...
Almost no cities do that as a first step. You always wanna go through your municipal court because it's already set up and they already have expenses.
The prior council, uh, you know, required a declaration of public nuisance that was preceded by a, a hearing and some evidence. It wasn't just the staff saying this is a public nuisance.
Right. Well, you have a process within, the ordinances now, you know, for, under the junk nuisance. I, I don't know, I don't think you need a judicial determination to abate a nuisance.
No, but we, it was, it was an administrative hearing.
Sure, yeah, yeah, I mean, the property owners have a process, right? So either if we, we think it's, in our opinion, it's, it's a bad or an eyesore or whatever, we still have to have, um, some evidence with regard to that presented in a public meeting and give it over or an opportunity to respond and then once it's found that it's a nuisance, give them a period of time to abate the nuisance. And if they don't, then we can, we're issuing an order to, for us to go on there to abate it and then tax the costs associated with that.
The problem with this particular case, it had to do with whether, whether it rose to the level of a public nuisance. Who, what was the health and safety threat associated with this?
Yeah, because they are licensed.
Yeah, I mean, so, again, I'm sorry, I shouldn't figure out the time to get by this displacement. I mean, if there, there were public comments saying that there's junk and there's snakes and vermin. I remember there's vermin being, I think, being used at least once. Once you have that, then you, then you have a nuisance, you know, under our, our current code. Uh, so, so if you look at the, you know, vehicles and junk, if you have vehicle parts or other items that would be considered junk and you have, um, some evidence that there's rats, mice and vermin or undesirable creatures, then, then certainly you can proceed with a nuisance prosecution and witness to court or through an abatement action through the court.
I think you look at, if you look at the nuisances, page two, uh, page three, and it says number three, any accumulation or deposit of any vehicle or equipment, parts, appliances, junk or material of any nature upon open ground. Now, is that, my, I have to ask the question, is, is it, is that on the ground or, because there's people in this town, we got junk up on the trailers covered with a tarp, so...
But I read that to being not in a structure like a shed or a garage or inside the house. So you're, you're in open ground, how you stack it doesn't give you, if you put it on stilts, it's still junk on open ground, but if it's, if it's in a structure or shed, it's not gonna be covered under that definition.
Right. Okay, I was wondering what open ground is, so it's, it's out in the, in the yard.
There's no tarp on it, so it doesn't necessarily be any good either.
So has this particular, uh, property been explored to that extent? I mean, to the point of where...
Let's have David come up here.
Sorry, Dave.
No, I'm sorry. The particular property was given a... I mean, the path that I've taken has been courtesy letters instead of going the route of hearings and we've gotten good results from that. And last year, I sent this property owner a courtesy letter about some junk, not the vehicles, because I didn't see that in the definition. And he abated what I asked him to abate and then we went through a building code issue. He also abated that. I can go back and look for junk and, you know, if the vehicles are deemed to be a public nuisance, I can certainly send him that letter also, but my question then is, what is the abatement? Get rid of five vehicles? Get rid of six vehicles?
Well, the, the vehicles would have to be causing a nuisance as opposed to just their mere presence. So if, if, if you have a situation where somebody's parking in the yard and the grass is rolled around, if the mice are accumulating, that type of thing, that's gonna be a nuisance. But if everything's maintained, it just has a lot of vehicles, that's, if that's the prob, if that's the only problem, then you're not gonna have a nuisance. You've just gotta got a lot of cars.
And that's, I think, where we sit.
Yes, I agree. But, you know, I haven't...
Well, from the testimony that was given at that, their last meeting, it suggested that there's more behind the houses than...
It did. I've, I've never seen any, and I've seen plenty lately, but I've never seen there any snakes, mice, rats, vermin.
Because you don't, I mean, although it's obviously getting better for the last month, if there's a snake above ground...
Yeah.
Because it was driven there, because the groundwater was so high.
Correct.
Frogs and snakes were everywhere.
But just having ten vehicles is not a nuisance.
It's not necessarily. It's all, in all these cases, uh, nuisances are really specifically fact driven based upon the condition of the property and what's there. Every one of them, I don't, there's no bright line rule. Again, a lot of its beauty is nigh of the holder type of thing and when you present the, and like I said, you do a municipal prosecution, which I've done in a lot of jurisdictions, there's always kind of a balancing between one man's junk and another man's treasure type of thing. Is it a decoration or is it junk that's out there? And so that's why the, the vermin is a key element, so it could be your treasure, but it could cause some problems, uh, and open doors and weeds and that type of thing, a really difficult objective standard, that's really what you're looking for. But it's, uh, it's a problem in every city. Every city's got these, these properties that people either can't or won't, if they want to, they seem like their neighbors and you just have to, you know, the best course of action is just what he's describing is, you know, this is, and you want, you want the cooperation because nobody wants a heavy hand to say, you have to do this, after now we're gonna do, come on your property and do it for you, that causes more conflict. So I think the, the path to start off is fine and then, you know, it's not acceptable, then you go the next step. So you always start with a loose, loose, invasive response and that's going there as necessary.
Michael?
I just, I wanna represent the neighbors in that neighborhood because I sure thought the feedback that we received was that had they removed nine vehicles from that property, we would have a problem. So I just wanna be on record for saying that. It wasn't the number of vehicles solely. And whatever, where we go from there is where we go, but...
So vehicles, as long as they're licensed and, the way I understand, they have to be operable, right? They have to be able to move.
That's correct.
But I don't know who checks that out. Chief, do you make the guy move every vehicle or, I mean...
My understanding is the threshold would be licensed. I mean, if it's, if it's got current license on it, I don't know that we have any authority to go and make him start it and move the car. If it's sitting there unlicensed or sitting on...
Especially in this yard now, on the street, it might be a different story, but...
Yeah.
In the yard, I, I don't think you can do that.
Well, again, unless it's a zoning issue, unless it's clearly inoperable, the whole clip is missing and it's got current license.
Well, you have that in our, in our, in our nuisance here, and we've had to tell people that, you know, saw a car up on Ridgeway that was on a jack and a back wheel off of it right by the school for months. You know, you only have in this, there's only a, you can work on your car in your driveway, but you can't work on it for twenty years. You have to...
Well, you can work on it for fourteen days.
Fourteen days you can work on.
But, but if the, if the rule is, and again, this is, is that it's unlawful for an owner to allow an inoperable, damaged, disabled, wrecked, demolished or unlicensed motor vehicle, in order to determine it is operable, you have to ask him to turn it on, to start it.
Yeah.
I don't think it's a reasonable request under the ordinance. It might claim self-incrimination issues.
But it's also unable to move. How do you determine that?
I think, I think we start getting into a real shaky ground if we're going and asking. Just because he has cars, if they are licensed vehicles, I mean, the state has to inspect them if they have a current license. Granted, a lot could happen in two years while you have your plates. I, you know, I think that if we, if we have the threshold, you know, obviously like the mayor said, an obviously inoperable vehicle, body parts or mechanical parts missing, but just, just the mere fact that he has them on the, on the property, I think we run into a questionable area going onto his property and, and asking for that.
Because I guess then I would, I have, I don't understand how then we determine under that same part, any vehicle which is not capable of moving under its own power. How do we determine that if we don't see it moving?
The assumption is if you got the license.
Yeah, you got license plate.
It must've moved.
At what, at what point?
Sometimes within the two years of the...
It's, yeah, it's, it's a licensed legal vehicle.
I mean, your, your neighbors can testify, that vehicle has sat in that spot three months and hasn't moved. Of course, you know, if you move a vehicle standing for long enough, the tires will fly out. But, you know, you'll, you'll have evidence that a vehicle hasn't been moved if you're paying attention to it. See, people are paying attention to, if they're, if you're at that point, people have been paying attention to it because it's been a problem. So there's a way to prove it.
Okay.
But, you know, the chief is right, you're not, you're not gonna have the police officer go around and say, hey, start that car unless there's some reasonable suspicion that there's a problem with that vehicle. There's gotta be an assumption that it's most decent, has plates on it, that it's passed inspection, that it's an operable vehicle.
And to get licensed, he had to have insurance.
That's what's hard to believe, if they're all insured, taxes paid.
Taxes are paid, I checked that.
The plates are new, that's right. Well, he does after he gets the plates renewed.
It's not earned.
Right. Especially if they're rather on the roadway, it's not, you know, not putting anybody in.
Well, again, if we, if we fixate on the number of vehicles solely, I feel like we're not serving the neighbors in that community.
I think what we're saying is the only thing we really have is if there's junk.
And there is.
I thought I saw some. I drove by, so...
Well, if it's still daylight, afternoon, maybe daylight, if we have time, we can wait by and see anything.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thanks for the great work, David. Thank you.
Is this broadcast live?
Yeah. They're gonna be waiting for you. Take your coat off. We're not, it'll be your third opportunity.
Okay.
All right, so, um, the other issue that popped my attention that, uh, I think should be discussed here is the school board apparently, uh, advertises on a routine basis, the possibility of a closed session and then if there's a need for a closed session, they have it. Upon investigating that, I have discovered, I know somebody in the school board. Yes, they do that routine thing, but then twenty-four hours before the meeting, they will put a specific reason for which they're gonna hold a closed session. And so, you know, they, it isn't, they aren't held holding a closed session under just kind of the blanket, uh, notice of the possibility of a closed session. Mark has advised, and he's here to speak for himself, that, uh, that, that, that we should, if we're gonna have a closed session, put the closed session on our public notice and the reason for which we're having it at least twenty-four hours before the meeting.
That's correct. Okay. Makes sense.
Um, never Jerry Bader, because there's a retaining wall on, uh, Washington, uh, west of Fifth Street. There's a house on the corner there and behind that house across from the academy on Washington, there's a concrete retaining wall, the origin of which we don't really know, although there is a local citizen who claims to know that. And it's shifted, uh, and to the point that it could fall over. Right now, it's kind of holding the bank in place for, for the road. So I think there is a legitimate interest on the part of the city, whether or not it's the city's retaining wall. Now, it isn't an imminent danger of falling, but it's clearly moved some in, 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 uh, so Jerry Bader found the property corners for me. And if you look down the line of those property corners and you say, okay, I'm gonna tilt that wall back up so it's perpendicular, it's right on the line. I can't figure out why it got built, nobody seems to know why it got built. It looks like it created the backyard for this house, but I can't imagine they would build such a big edifice in order to, to do that. But it's also holding the bank in place for the road, so I, I, I just don't know. And so Gary's going to, or has, trying to impose on a concrete contractor to come out and give us a seat of the pants, uh, order of magnitude cost if it, if we need, if we need to replace it and we'll decide where to go from here.
Totally established, is it, is it our wall?
No, I haven't established one.
May I ask the question that if we repair this retaining wall, then does the city own the wall?
Well, if we, if we do that, any portion of that wall is on the adjoining property, we're gonna get an easement.
Okay, all right.
See, there's, there's one section of the wall that's bad.
Right.
But there's two more sections that are not failed.
And, and under any circumstances, if we replace it, we're gonna have to get a temporary construction easement because we're gonna be in their backyard. It's a, it's a knotty problem and I'm not sure what the solution is.
Well, the street is dipped down right there.
Well, the street's, yeah, it's ruined.
And that, that appears to be because the wall shifted.
Yeah.
So where are our boundaries on the city streets and towns?
Well, they're all of the ones.
Yeah.
I mean, it's because of the historic nature of the town. It wasn't, we weren't, that's recorded for every property showing a property corner. So some, in some cases, the property corners are in the... So some, in some cases, the property corners are in the middle of the street, and the street is on an easement. In other cases, the property corners for the property are, are not in the, in the street. So the street is right-of-way, it's owned by the city, but the width of that varies depending on where you are. So I can't tell you.
So it can be more than just the width of the pavement?
It can be, and oftentimes is. A lot of, a lot of the, a lot of them are 40 feet wide, and there's one section of winter that never was constructed, or was constructed and taken out, it's 40 feet, then it drops down to 20 feet, and it's just all over the place.
Well, that whole area, there's a lot of walls. On the school property, on the academy property, they're holding back dirt, and I don't know who personally brought this and said, this, back when it was brought, that the city did all that work, so...
And, uh, let's see, David had another rental housing committee meeting that I thought went well. David organizes a good meeting, always has it prepared, and knows to ask people to make a decision, and so he'll just sit down, talking, and leads a, a... Good organizer. And that's all I have to report, unless you have a question. Took long enough.
Let me give it forward. Chief, Eric Bammack?
Sorry, we were talking, easements and city apartments.
Good evening.
Good evening, chief.
How was everybody?
All right, you too.
Good. I don't have a tremendous amount to report. Finished up with the fair, didn't have any, any real major issues. We are getting ready for juror fat next month. I'm sure you guys have probably heard, if not, the fair is actually doing some type of carnival-type thing, that same weekend up at the fairgrounds. You know, obviously, that's, that's county property, that's inside the city limits. So we will be losing the majority of the sheriff's department staff that we have typically had to assist during juror fat to that event. They will be, they will be taking care of that, which, that helps that we won't be manning that up there, but again, some of the staff that we have typically had here during juror fat will be up there, so, so it'll be a little tight, but we'll certainly, certainly make do, so...
Do you foresee more overtime from your staff because of that?
There's only so many, I mean, everybody's scheduled for overtime that weekend anyways. I mean, I can't see adding more hours because of it. I just think we'll be less of a ratio officer to, to patrons because of it.
Maybe deputies that we have.
I, I mean, I think that they usually gave us a dozen or so for the weekend, so... Again, I mean, you know, obviously, we've had several juror fats under our belt and are capable of handling it. It's just when beer gardens start closing and people are getting pushed out, it's nice to have a little show of, of strength there, but, I mean, we'd knock on wood, have not had any serious problems with it in the past, and I don't know what time their event is closing, there, there's a good possibility they'll be freed up and back down at juror fat by the time those beer gardens are closing. But just something that we're, we're kind of looking forward to, and, and looking ahead and trying to, trying to staff appropriately, so...
Boy, and if any thing happened major, you got them to...
Yeah, they would, they would respond from there, yeah. So we'll have, we'll have deputies in town, you know, just to be able to answer that. You know, certainly our guys will be on, on point for that, but just something, something to consider, so... Does anybody have any questions? Any problems or concerns that we need to know about? All right, thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Thanks.
Andrew?
Good evening, everyone.
Thanks, Sam.
Just want to hit a couple of high points. As you see at the top of your report there, May was our highest May in five to six years. We had a lot of student groups, a lot of adult groups, and a lot of leisure travelers. June, however, was quite the opposite, and the most obvious there is the flooding impacts. I know that you realize this, but our transportation access was cut off from the ferry, well, it's been cut off of the ferry most of the spring. Chester Bridge was out, the Cape Bridge was out, and at one point, even the Jefferson Barracks Bridge in South County in St. Louis was either closed or limited access, and of course, Highway 61 was closed between here and Cascaskia, St. Mary's. So that definitely affected us, and I think another thing that really affects us is the impression that people get about the flooding. So they hear flooding, and they know that most of the things along the Missouri River flooded, and the Mississippi. We had so many phone calls for people asking, well, yes, about the bridges and the ferries, because everybody was confused about that. But also, is St. Genevieve even open? Are you underwater, or whatever? So we were pumping out information on social media during that period, and it's, it's just important to, I think, to keep these things in mind, because it does affect our economy, obviously. And as Eric pointed out, we're two weeks away from juror fat, getting ready for that. We had a display set up at the county fair, and I think they had a nice turnout up there. We have this weekend, tomorrow night is the Fourth Friday Art Walk, and Saturday is the Chalk Art Festival. This was rescheduled from the last Saturday in June to this Saturday. And so, as you remember from the street closure request, that one block of North Main Street will be closed on Saturday for the festival. There will be art taking place all throughout the street, there will be rock stacking contests. Apparently, this is a trend across the country, rock stacking is a phenomenon now. And there will also be cake walks, karaoke, face painting, storybook princesses, lots of activities for the little ones. So if you have any little ones in your family, grandchildren, friends, neighbor, make sure that they know that's going on this weekend. And I have some extra copies of this flyer, if anyone wants to take one back to their workplace. Happy to do so. In addition, we recently met with the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, asking them to consider sponsoring St. Genevieve as one of the stops in the 2020 Bike Across Missouri. This is a recreational biking event that draws several hundred leisure bicyclists, and they go from point to point on a bike ride, and they spend the night in that community, go out to dinner, get up the next day, and go on their next location. The organizer is 573, excuse me, is Missouri Life Magazine, get my festivals confused. Missouri Life Magazine, which is the coffee table book with out of glossy pictures, that has features about all the different things to see and do in, in the state of Missouri. So they have sponsored this bike ride in other parts of Missouri for the last five years, and this will be the first time that it comes to southeast Missouri. And so they're proposing for it to begin at Poplar Bluff, they're going to hit Cape Girardeau, Perryville, Farmington, and St. Genevieve. So we're hoping that that request goes well. It does require a $5,000 sponsorship, because they bring in, you know, the trucks with the showers, and they bring in crews to transport the bikers' gear from one place to another. They handle all the logistics, and they hire entertainment. So there's, in addition to the bikers staying overnight, there's a free live music performance, a concert. So they handle all those details, and it would be great if St. Genevieve could be one of those communities, and so if you know any chamber board members, please encourage them to look favorably on that request. And then I just wanted to, it's not on my report, because it's happened since then, but if you're a Facebook user, and you follow Visit St. Jen or City Hall, you already know this, but today, the post was about the USA Today article about the national park coming to St. Genevieve. And so that went out yesterday and repeated today on several of USA Today's websites and online publications. We're not sure yet if it will be in one of their print publications, but the author that came here to do the article is going to keep us posted about that. So if you have a chance to amplify our social media message, please share either the City Hall or the Visit St. Jen information about that, because it's really some great nationwide coverage for our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well done. Thank you.
Hey, Sam, who would be the contact person for this bicycle event?
Yes.
Cory?
Good evening.
How's it going, Cory?
You have a copy of the report in front of us? Any questions? Pardon, the fence guys will be here in the morning, seven o'clock. So, for the water tower, supposed to be here last week, but weather, inclement weather?
For the fence?
Yes, sir.
Once the fence goes up and the bill comes in, I'd be asking if you were going to structure the, convert that to permanent financing, and then the county will take over payments until, our, our contract period is, we'll take it over.
They're looking for about a week completion, weather permitting, so...
Now that the water park is open, and has been open, is the supply to the tower adequate, is everything working the way it's supposed to?
Yes, it is, yeah, we have. Right now, we're waiting for the skater to get installed, but we monitor off manual gauges, and then we're, we're keeping sufficient.
So I have those in town, when you're doing fire block testing?
Yeah, that report will be typed up and sent to Kenny tomorrow.
What?
I said, I'll type it up and send it to Kenny tomorrow. It is completed, though.
No problem.
Nope. Hopefully, one as smooth as it did last time in Corning King, so...
Good job.
Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Cory.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any committee reports? Any public comments? In order of the public comments, we will go into a public hearing at, first, the hearing will be at 6:41. The Board of Alderman and the City of St. Gene will hold a public hearing to consider an annexation petition filed with the city on June 26, 2019, by Raymond and Carol Ziegler. David, you need to come for your air.
Mr. and Mrs. Ziegler submitted a petition for annexation for a .72 acre lot, southern end of town. It is contiguous and compact with the city, and it would come on as non-conforming, because it becomes R1 right at the get-go, and there would be no residents, but it does have accessory structures, so that would be a utility use, but that is not, well, preventing it from coming on the books.
Your recommendation is to approve, right?
For an annexation, I didn't make a recommendation.
No, it'll be, it's, it's in the packet for...
Oh, no, I'm wondering, I'm sorry, David. Okay.
Are there any questions?
Yes, sir.
I know originally, there was some, whenever these new maps, as far as the floodplains came up, all of this is all up to speed.
Prior to February 15th, the majority of the lot was in the floodplain. New maps took effect February 15th. There's just a minuscule corner of the lot now in the floodplain.
Thanks, Sam.
Yep.
What is the reason that the Ziegler's are pursuing this?
I believe they'd like access to city water and sewer.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It is livable.
Okay, thanks, man.
Please state the name of the address, please.
Okay, Raymond Ziegler, and anyhow, this, this is what is actually called a shouts. It's a, it's a shop that's livable as a house. It has a bathroom, it has a kitchen, and there could be a bedroom in it also. And we are, we're definitely needing to do whatever we are asked of. If we have to come into the city in order to get our water and sewer, we'll be more than happy to do so, and we have no problem. And of course, we're, we're happy to pay our taxes for it and everything, so the, the city will gain taxes, and we'll gain water and sewer. So, wow, that's...
Joe, you have a question?
Well, just to clarify for some of the newer members, Ed already came to the board once, when it was an empty lot, with a plan on what he wanted to do, but had he annexed at the time the stuff that he was wanting to do, the dog kennels, the shop, and all that, wouldn't have been allowed under the zoning that he would have came in under at the time. So we basically said, do what you want to do with the property first, and then we'll annex you in at a later date, once you get everything done, and...
Did the zoning change on that one? So it's still going to be coming? It comes as R1. Okay. So that's why they're back, the dates are off on this?
But it will be lawfully non-conformal, right?
Right.
So that's why they're before us again, so...
I guess my only question and stuff is, to be able to hook you up to water and sewer, I mean, do we have current facilities there now? I mean, is it just a matter of...
The sewer is within 50 feet of our building, but as far as water, we, we might have to go across Highway 61 to get water.
The sewer currently runs at the back of the lot already.
Yeah.
It backs to St. Jude, the water...
You can go across 61 or down toward the storage units, they have them in that.
So it's not going to require any main extensions by the city?
You know, the, the buildings across from us is the recycle center, so we're right across from the recycle center.
Right.
Yeah.
Definitely an improvement to the property.
Oh, yeah. I mean, it did have a shed on it at one time, it did have a trailer home on it at one time, and I think back in 1993, the trailer home was moved off of the property, and nothing was done with the property. It was growing up in trees, it, it had old shed on it that, that I had it removed. I didn't do it myself, but I did pay to have it removed, and it, it does look 100% better, if I have to say so myself.
Yeah.
And I would invite anybody in this room to come down to see it. If, if anybody wants to come, I, I'm available pretty often. I mean, I've been retired for six years, so I can be there anytime.
So, so this, is the city you're comfortable with, just coming off our water? I guess, did you guys explore, possibly, given well or in sector?
No, we never checked on a well or septic tank system or anything.
I was just curious, because there are some people that would much rather live in county than in city, and so...
Well, yeah.
But this is not what you guys are...
But, but we lived in the city ever since 1971, and we don't have any problem with the city. And, and...
Yeah.
Yeah, well, listen, I'm definitely not...
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. 6:48, we'll close the public hearing. And then at 6:48, we're going to open up another public hearing for the Board of Alderman and the City of St. Genevieve, public hearing to consider request on Phil Cabral for a special use permit for our Collisions Center.
Mr. Cabral has submitted an application for a special use permit to operate Cabral Collision Center and Automotive Collision Repair Shop in conformance with zoning use regulations in order to be allowed to construct an addition greater than 50% of the existing building area. So he has approximately a 2,570 square foot building, he wants to put on a approximately 4,300 square foot addition, that's quite a bit more than 50% of the 2,500. So he needs to operate in conformance in order to be allowed to do that, and that's basically what we're doing here today. He had, the planning and zoning recommended approval, with terms and conditions, the vote was six to zero, with two absent. I have... I have received no feedback from any neighbors. None, zero.
Is he already nonconformal?
Currently.
Gary, did you have, or Alderman Smith, did you have a question earlier?
No, sir.
Okay.
That's good.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Under the terms and conditions, I guess, were these brought up by you or discussed between you two or?
They were written into the proposal by me and then discussed between me and Mr. Cabral, and then we'd be also asked about them at the planning and zoning meeting.
Are there any issues that you had that you don't want to cooperate with all that? So this downdraft spray booth will be inside the building?
Correct.
It is state-of-the-art. They're made in USA. They're all throughout the country. It's pretty much a necessity with the way automobiles are evolving. I mean, the shop that I have works now. It does the job. It does it efficiently, but the booth would make it much more efficient. And it does meet ETA and OSHA regulations, if that would be any issue.
Any other questions? Any other questions? No other questions, I'll close this public hearing, 6:51.
Thank you.
When it's closed, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Second.
Whatever.
What are we approving?
A special review for the Alderman.
Okay, thanks. I didn't know if we were going back to the first one or going to the second one. Thank you.
Okay, so I have a first and a second. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Takes us to the consent agenda.
Easy. Yeah. No, I didn't.
I just said consent agenda.
Also, I had another question regards, might be towards Mark, but I'm not really for him. I know it's been brought up when it comes to merchants license. I've talked to you guys kind of behind doors about it. Is it regular, I guess, when it comes to other municipalities to charge different varied amounts when it comes to merchants licenses? I know this also ties into liquor licenses as well, but just in general, if you look up the merchants license ordinance, they're per industry, per amount of employees you have, you're charged different for your merchants license. Is there a reason behind that, or is that normal?
It's kind of loaded question. And.
Oh, there's only like three.
I mean, the, there's a couple of the questions. Liquor licenses generally have an authority by state statute, depending on the type of license. The, there are some state statutes with regard to certain businesses, including exemptions, so like law office, for example, except for some licensing requirements, but insurance brokers too, I think. But, yeah, it's common to have different amounts. Quite frankly, it's been a lot, well, it's not, unless they've been approved by the voters here, fees, as opposed to tax. So quite frankly, I haven't looked at the schedule that the city has here, and so I'd ask to be able to review that so I can give you an intelligent answer to the question. I don't mean like right this second, but it is common to have different fees for different businesses, and it's supposed to be based upon the level of work or services provided to different industries to justify a higher fee. Otherwise, it's more of a tax, and you can still do that, but if you have.
It states that it's a tax.
If you can, if you have this specific fee scheduled by this case for tax revenue that has to be voted approved, I don't, that could have been done many, many years ago, or it could have been set before they, I don't know, even passed. It's a city solace, so I'd like to have more history on the entire subject and where they really give you a.
Let me turn the question around. There's nothing wrong with having a standard fee for, regardless of the nature of the business.
Yes, I mean, that would be the, I don't even know what the fee schedule is, but if you have.
It's weird.
It's all over the place.
Yeah, it's everywhere.
So do you know how long it's been in the tax? Is it a definite, I mean, predate?
The problem would be if you want, I'm working my mouth, but if you want to change it, and the change results in an increase, then you might be running into a Hancock problem.
Only if it's not related to the expenses and services associated with the permitting process and the city services provided to build businesses. So if it's more than a nominal amount, you can't do it for the purpose of raising revenue, bottom line. You can always lower it. If you're going to increase it, you got to make sure you're not doing it for the purpose of raising revenue.
It's just not equal across the board right now.
Basically, I would just be looking.
Right.
I mean, there are obviously, there are some that are just 10 bucks.
Right.
But I was looking to more lower it because some of them are like 100 or 125 or something along those lines. And some of those lower ones are around the insurance industry, and I don't understand that. That, you know, you've got companies writing millions of dollars worth of policies and stuff here and we're collecting 10 or 15 dollars.
It's generally not any basic on the revenue of the business, unless you're going to have it as a voter proof tax.
That's just something that I wanted to at least look into, because it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me, you know, to come in and do business here, charge a flat fee is what would make more sense to me, but.
It's certainly easier to justify if the application process is the same and the oversight is the same for all the businesses, and it makes sense to have a flat fee set based upon at least the time associated with processing the coins and oversight.
There's no differential. I'm aware.
Well, some of.
It's the same work for a pharmacy as it is for a candy store.
Right. But some of our fees were set due to the nature of the business, like a tavern or a place that sells liquor could be a higher burden on our resources for police services and stuff.
That's a difference. That's totally different.
It's different.
You can raise or lower those as long as it's within a certain.
Right. Certain statutory authorized amount, that's right.
But that's, you guys are talking about liquor licenses. You're talking about different business licenses.
Liquor license are different.
Yeah, but I mean, our merchant license that goes along with that was based off those variables too, wasn't it?
I believe you have a separate business license or merchant license, and then you have a liquor license.
Right.
Or maybe multiple liquor licenses, depending on what they apply for. So that's a different issue, the liquor license opposed to merchants license.
And we have certain places that have more than one business.
In the same building.
In the same building.
A plumber and an HVAC guy has two businesses, but he has one building, and heretofore he's been required to have two licenses.
Are they separate corporations?
The ordinance just states that if you're doing two separate types of business, that you'll have to have a license for each.
It depends on the circumstances. I mean, if you have two different businesses, but if you're just a DVA, Joe, plumber electrician that's one, you don't, I mean, it all depends on the circumstances.
We'll talk about it later.
Yes.
I just want to at least discuss it.
Good point. Yeah.
Sounds like a good agenda item.
Yes.
entertain a motion on the presented agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. Takes us to old business, Bill number, second reading of Bill number 4297, an ordinance approving a bid proposal from IDEX Laboratories for the purchase of lab equipment for wastewater treatment plant in the amount not to exceed $7,238.50.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Wolfen.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Eight, yes, serial dose. Bill number 4297 now becomes ordinance 4226.
Thank you. Takes us to new business, Bill number 4298, an ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, to establish procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain officials.
Move through. What is this for? It's a state requirement.
So if you pass this ordinance, every two years, every elected official will have to fill out a very detailed disclosure statement with the ethics commission every year. If you pass this, then you'd only have to file a disclosure statement with the city and the ethics commission if you have specific business with the city itself that exists at $500 generally, or if you have a business that contracts with the city.
And I try to do it every year, so if I fail to do it one year, then I'm so caught.
That's a great idea.
Good job.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Aye. Takes us to first reading of Bill number 4299, an ordinance providing for the annexation of the City of St. Genevieve's existing corporate limits, certain real estate property owned by Raymond and Carol Ziegler.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. Takes us to other business. Any communications? I got, I'm going to be having a meeting, you're all, some of you welcome to it once come, on Monday at 3 o'clock for the, we're going to do a lessons learned on the flooded, past flood event of information for people, if we have a problem with the levee, evacuation, police department will be there, fire department, emergency management will be there, levy board members will be there, so if you're more than welcome to come, that'd be great.
Is that here?
That's here.
And for your information, I will not be there.
That's right.
I'll be leaving town tomorrow afternoon.
Then I'm definitely coming.
That's good.
Thursday next week, going to Denver to visit.
And David is graciously, he'll be here.
Good for you, man.
He's going to take copious notes, so we'll have information.
Did you hear that, David? Oh, the mayor signed up for something. Say yes.
I thought you were about it. He'll be here.
Do you want to mention that?
Sir, is any other, I'd like to take a motion, make a motion to go into closed session to discuss real estate?
Make a motion to move to closed session to discuss real estate.
Second.
Any roll call, please?
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yeah.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Wolfen.
Yes.
Attorney, 702.